All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. And Joe and Amy, thanks for being here. My name is Ron Russ and I'm superintendent of the Merton Community School District. And this evening, we have the two Arrowhead candidates for the Merton seat this evening. And we'd like to thank Amy and Joe for being here. A little bit about the format this evening. Paul McGinnley is going to be our moderator, question asker. And what we're going to do is, as we will after an intro, we do have four kind of questions that are already prepared. Paul will ask those. The candidates have not seen the questions. They'll have about two minutes each to answer the questions. Mary is walking around with some other question cards that if you have a question that you'd like to ask, feel free to write that down. Just raise your hand, Mary will come get it. And we'll slide that over to Paul to ask him again. Those questions will be answered in approximately one minute. So we're going to take about 55 minutes for the candidate forum. And we'll just kind of go from there. So at this time, Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you and we'll get rolling.
Thanks, Ron. So for those who don't know me, my name is Paul McGinnley. I live in the Merton community. I have two daughters and a girl here at Merton. And Ron has asked me to kind of moderate the forum here for the Arrowhead board position. And Ron did touch on the logistics of the forum, but I'll just quickly run down how it's going to proceed. So there'll be a two-minute introduction for each candidate. And then after that, there'll be several questions, as Ron has indicated. And they will be provided on a rotating basis. So Amy would go first and Joe would follow. The next question, Joe will go first and Amy will follow. And that will continue for four questions. Then, as Ron has said, there will be a community opportunity to ask questions. And there'll be one minute for each of those questions. And at the end, each candidate will have a two-minute closing, two minutes for closing statements. So that's pretty much it. So we can get started here with, so we've randomly selected that for the opening statements, Amy would go first. So if you'd like to give up to two minutes, you don't have to use the full two minutes. So use as much time as you need under that two minutes for opening statements.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'm Amy Hammer. I haven't done one of these for six years, so I'm a little nervous. A brief background, I graduated from UW-Madison many years ago. I have a degree in graphic arts. My husband and I have lived out here since 1992. We've been married over 30 years. I have three children. One is currently a sophomore at Arrowhead. He's a boy. I have a daughter at UW Lacrosse who's a freshman and a daughter who's a junior at UW-Madison. And all our kids went through Merton here. Two of them went to Northlake for a brief period. And everyone's been to Arrowhead so far. My own background, when my kids were here at Merton, I did a lot of work with the schools. I was on the PTO. I was a treasurer secretary, president for a while. We had one of the biggest fundraisers ever where we raised almost $40,000 for the 4K playground that's in the front of the building at the primary school and also some other playground equipment. I was also a substitute teacher for several years. I saw the ins and outs of teaching. I did IA work, which is instructional assistant. And I ran for the school board six years ago when there was an issue going on with curriculum and a lot of parents were upset with what was going on. And I was kind of the leader of our group that led the charge on what was going on and why we were unhappy. And Merton at the time saw quite a few children open enroll elsewhere, which affected the school. And since that time, I got on the board. We've done some really good things at Merton. Act 10 came through. That was very contentious at first, but we're on the road to really good things right now when my time's running out. I didn't get to my half of what I wanted to say. But in summary, I'd like to say, I really enjoyed my time at Merton. I've loved being on the board. I've learned a lot. I've been on the finance committee since I've been here and I'd like to bring what I know to Arrowhead to help out. Okay, we got it.
Thank you for inviting me here and for your attendance this evening. My name is Joe LeBlanc. Most everybody here perhaps don't know me. I'm not around the school that often anymore. I am a retired mechanical design engineer. I've lived in the village of Merton for about 35 years after moving out from the East Coast with my family. I have four adult children who are graduates of Merton School. Times when they were here at Merton School, my wife and I were both very active here. In fact, my wife was president of PTO one year. I was involved with the Merton Athletic Association and its infancy in those days. And now, what we're scrolling into. And I have, I spent nine years as a member of the school board here at Merton School. Currently, I'm a member of the board over at Arrowhead and I've been on the Arrowhead board for over 20 years. I have four adult children, two grandchildren who are graduates of Arrowhead High School. I have a grandson who's a freshman over there. I've enjoyed myself over there, being on the Merton board. I've had the opportunity, excuse me, on the Arrowhead board, I have had the opportunity to work with a great bunch of people. And I say great due to the fact they don't have their own personal agendas. Everybody over there has worked to a one goal. And that goal was to provide the best educational opportunity for all the students in the area. And hopefully, if I'm elected, I would like to continue helping on those ones. And Joe?
All right. Thank you, Joe. Amy, for those opening statements. So we'll move on to the first question. This time, it will go to Joe first. So Joe, in your view, what are some of the major issues presently facing the district? With that, what are your positions on those issues? And or what would you recommend the district do differently? Or how they should confront those issues?
The biggest issue, I think, facing us at the present time is what state and federal legislature is doing to us. And when I say that, I mean, they're stepping in and they're not letting schools function the way they should. They have gone and they've taken revenues away from us and passed them on to private schools. They went ahead because they passed Act 10, which are, which are a big asset to us. It helped us. It helped us take, and war costs in various areas, life insurance, benefits of that nature. But in doing so, they also did something else. They decreased the revenue they were providing for us. So that kind of handicaps us. It takes in, reduces our revenue, as Laura had mentioned earlier, our expenses are going So now, as it's balancing act, providing the best education for the students is our top priority. And that's where our efforts have gone. And in consequence of that, these maintenance issues that we're faced with have now come to a head. And if we can't pass this referendum, we're going to have a very different road to home. And that is, cuts are going to have to be made somewhere. And unfortunately, I feel these cuts are going to have to come from programs that we have in place. Arrowhead is one of the top schools, not only in the state, but across the country. This is what we want to maintain. It's going to be a difficult road.
All right. Thank you, Jill. And I'll reread the question for the second candidate. Amy, in your view, what are some of the major issues personally facing the district? With that, what are your positions on those issues? And or what would you recommend the district do differently? Or how they should confront those issues?
I think one of the biggest issues is declining enrollment, which all the schools in our area are experiencing. And Arrowhead is just starting to feel that a little bit. How you adapt to declining enrollment to solve the problem? I would say you'd have to streamline your classes, look at what teachers are doing, the workloads, exactly like that. And figure out where you could get more money from for the lost students that you're losing. You could also look at marketing your schools in a different way to attract more. I know that Arrowhead is very well-known around the area for sporting and sports and things like that. But I would say you want to promote more of the really educational aspects of it. It is a very good school. The ACT scores are way up there. Kids who graduate from Arrowhead usually get into colleges that they want to. And it's got a very good reputation, but I think that needs to be sold more on a broader basis to attract more students, stem the tide of losing students and losing revenue.
All right. Thank you, Amy. So we'll move on to the second question. And this one will be for you, for Amy, for you first. What is your personal vision for the school district? Where do you see yourself having the greatest impact? And what experiences do you feel have prepared you to make this impact?
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Sure. What is your personal vision for the school district?
Well, when I, if I win the seat at Arrowhead, what I would like to see is expanding more opportunities for students than, for their future than just planning on going to college. I think we need to look more at other areas for students who aren't that interested in going to college and target them. The trades are looking for people, where the jobs are. Offer more opportunities, more challenges, getting to see other businesses and what businesses in the areas do. There's just so much more that could be done to put a better perspective or spin on the idea that every child needs to go to college. Because every child does not need to go to college, you can get a very good job going to a tech school or learning a trade or going into the military. And I think there's a perception that it's kind of almost snooty, you know, if you don't go to college, that that's somehow bad. And I don't think that's the case. And I think that could be presented in the schools in a more positive way. And that kind of starts in the families, too, that not everyone should expect to go to college if they, they don't feel that they, that's for them. I guess that's what I would say.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Joe, what is your personal vision for the school district? For example, where do you see yourself having the greatest impact? And what experiences do you feel have prepared you to make this impact?
Let's just be clear. I'm sorry. It's a word. What is your personal vision for the school district? And what characteristics do you have that you could have impact on them? Well, I think what I have to offer to the school right now is probably many years of experience. We have done a lot of great things over at Arrowhead. And this is due to the fact that we have a school board whose prime objective is providing the best for the youngsters. Amy has mentioned things that she feels that we need to look at at Arrowhead. Well, Amy, many of those things you mentioned are there now. And I agree that not everyone is really primed to go, go to college. We have a large population of graduates who do go to college, but that's not for everyone. We have put in the D, the Design Engineering Manufacturing Center to expose students to the trades, if you will. And they're not trades like many of us in our younger days remember. They're modern setups. We have worked with manufacturing companies. They've committed and assisted us in setting up these areas. We have programs where even for our special ed students, we have programs to prepare them for the world of work, things that they're capable of doing. So we're exposing students to many aspects of what I call the real world is out there right now. So many of these programs are already in place. My job and be part of my job as well is to tweak these along with our staff at school and improve them in areas where we can do a little better. But many of these programs that will find students to various areas for their future are already in place.
All right. Thank you, Joe. So this one will be directed at Amy first, Joe again. Question number three. While it is always easy to point out what someone or something is doing wrong, what in your view are some of the things you think the district is doing right? And why do you hold that view?
Things that we're doing right? I think that I've already moved into some of those. And that is offering programs to students at the high school to expose them to different facets of the real world. Like I had mentioned, college isn't for everyone. And now, we expose people to the manufacturing area. We expose them to different type of work within our area where our employers are looking for help. We do, in many ways, try to function our programs to sort of a variety of people, not steering everyone directly to the college area, but be able to show them, you don't have to go to college. There are good paying jobs out there and we have to be able to bring those to the surface for these students. And I think we're in the process of doing that right now.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Amy, while it is always easy to point out what someone or something is doing wrong, what in your view are some of the things you think the district is doing right? And why do you hold that view?
Well, I can't always speak for Arrowhead because I'm not aware of all the programs that Joe mentioned. I haven't been in the schools and, you know, not as up as he is as school board member. At Merton, we've been doing a lot of things right for the children. We've adapted our core curriculum, updated everything. So we're all in line with the 21st century. We've got new STEM labs and math and science has been updated. We're one-to-one with electronic devices. Our computers that the children have for third grade through eighth grade. And I know Arrowhead has their laptops, too, that the students have to bring or everyone has one. So technology is very important these days and all of our kids are up on that, which is a good thing. There are so many different good things that are going on. It's hard to list everything in a brief question. I think both Merton and Arrowhead provide excellent educations and they can keep doing that, whether or not the money is there. I don't think the money is the most important thing. I don't think you have to have a Taj Mahal of a school to get a good education, although it is a little bit disturbing to see tile falling off the walls, like we saw in the presentation earlier. But at Merton, we've done some really good things and we've managed to save money. And that's another thing that bothers me, which was the question, two questions before, after the Arrowhead referendum presentation. But I think you can do a lot of good things for schools and it doesn't all depend on money.
All right. Thank you, Amy. So we'll move on to question four. And Amy is going to lead, you first. With schools across the state being hit with decreased state aid and budgets being tightened, in addition to an upcoming referendum that if not passed, the district has said that programs might be affected, identify a program or area you would protect and another one that you would consider reducing in order to meet budgetary goals for the district.
Well, what I would protect are the core classes that all children need, you know, math, the science, reading, language arts, the things that you really need to get by and you really have to know to go to college or elsewhere. I'm not exactly sure what all the classes at Arrowhead are, if there are some kind of fun ones that could be eliminated or streamlined. I think you could look at streamlining courses, eliminating some that aren't necessary or are just for fun, because every, every place has those. College has that, you know, you just kind of take those and kind of, I wouldn't say goof off classes, but kind of an easy A or kind of fun. I don't think that's totally necessary. But I would keep the core classes intact and see how teachers or whatever could be rearranged to assure that those are not cut.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Joe, with schools across the state being hit with decreased state aid and budgets being tightened, in addition to an upcoming referendum that if not passed, the district has said that programs might be affected, identify a program or area you would protect and another that you would consider reducing in order to meet budgetary goals for the district.
Very difficult question because I believe everything that we have at Arrowhead is an asset to the students. I agree with Amy that the core classes have to be in place because we have a certain percentage of students who are fully college-bound. They're going to need these to meet the requirements for entering college. There may be some French classes. I really can't put my finger on them because I'm not in the day-to-day type of operation as soon, you know, what these classes might be. But no matter how you look at it, it's going to be a very difficult decision to make due to the fact we are, we are one of the schools that offer so many alternatives for our students out there. With the decreased revenues, yeah, very definitely is going to have to be some changes. But I can't sit here and honestly tell you which ones they would be. It's going to have to take a lot of working back and forth with staff and administration to, in school, to really decide which one of those would have the least effect on students.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Audience question. So we're going to move to an audience question now. And question four, Amy would first, so this time, Joe, I'll offer it to you first. Actually, let me just give it a quick read here and just make sure it's broken. It's okay. It's all right. Sorry. All right. So the topic is top issues to address. The question is, what are the top two things you feel need to be addressed over the next two years at Arrowhead High School?
Top two things to address? Unfortunately, I don't think it's the curriculum and what we have to offer at Arrowhead. I think the big thing we have to address right now is our maintenance programs. Due to the fact that we had to put these programs, these maintenance issues aside due to the fact that our number one priority, again, being to have the best opportunity for the students, and we've gone that route. But now, we've got to the point where we're going to have to pay the price. So the biggest thing we're going to have to look at is how we approach these major maintenance problems that cannot be put off anymore.
And Amy, so the topic is top issues to address. The question is, what are the top two things you feel need to be addressed over the next two years at Arrowhead High School?
Well, one of the top things I mentioned earlier was the declining enrollment. And as I also mentioned, I don't feel that's a problem. I feel how you address it is really the issue. And there's many different things you really can do to address open enrollment. Just work with marketing companies, work with families. Like Joe said in the paper today, work with realtors when they're taking families around and talking about the schools and just attract more people to this area. Every child is given money to the schools, and thus, my open enrollment is devastating to different schools. Another topic which might not be as important as declining enrollment is also the drug and alcohol issue. I know not a lot of people have talked about that, but I do hear a lot of things going on at our middle school and time's up.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Do you have any more audience questions? The questions that have been submitted have already been addressed. Okay. Very well. So we'll continue. So Ron, I'm just going to be going through the questions. You don't want to stop asking.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So Joe went first that time, so now it's Amy's turn. So make sure I keep that in line. So Amy, as a school board member, how do you balance the needs of the community versus the needs of the school?
Well, at Merton, we were kind, we're a very anti-referendum board mentality, I would say. And we always worked our best. Like I said, I was on the finance committee since I've been on the board, so that's going on six years. And when I first got on, I didn't know a whole lot. And school finance is a total different animal than regular finance in your real lives. So I've learned a lot that way. And we always looked at the community and the school. And we try to keep the concerns of the community and the school together, you know? It's very important for the students and what we're doing with our education. We always stress that. I think at Merton, we provided one of the best educations kids can have. And we're always adapting to what's going on in the world around us with our technology. We were one of the first leaders with that. But, and we always do keep the needs of the community in the forefront, too. How much our taxpayers are willing to pay. We try to get the most bang for our buck that any community can. And I think we do a really good job of that.
And Joe, as a school board member, how do you balance the needs of the community versus the needs of the school?
It's a real balancing act because my feeling has always been to attempt to provide the best opportunity for students at the cost that the taxpayers can handle. I think in the past, we've been able to do that quite well. But with the legislature stepping in the way that they, they have, they've been handicapping us in that particular area. So my approach was, would be to, if we have to cut somewhere, make the cuts minimal and so we can keep the tax levy down as much as we possibly can to be in fairness to the taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. We're going to move on from the fiscal questions on to an academic question here. So Joe, this one will be directed at you first. What is your view on the amount of assessment our students are taking here? And I think by assessment, maybe formal assessments.
You're talking basically standard testing type of assessments. I have a problem with that. And due to the fact, I think we have too many things coming down from the state level as far as testing is concerned, and the tremendous amount of time that our students use in the, in the testing just to satisfy the state. I think it's time for the state to really get their act together, minimize this amount of testing, which in reality, they need. They need to know what the schools are doing. But let's minimize that and do it in a practical way where you're not taking time away from the educational process of the students.
And Amy, what, what is your view on the amount of assessment our students are taking here?
Sometimes I think it's a little bit too much. And sometimes you get the impression that you're teaching to the test. I know last year, I think, we were, our kids were supposed to take the Badger exam or something, and we were all worried about that. And then it changed. Then we weren't taking that because it was something mandated by the DPI or the, or Madison. And then we're reactive, like, are their kids going to do this? Are our kids going to do that? And I do think there's too much time spent assessing our kids. What I would like to see is, when the kids from the feeder schools leave the feeder schools and go to Arrowhead, how the different feeder school students are doing at Arrowhead? Like, how does Merton compare to Northlake or Richmond or anything like that? If schools could get the feedback from the high school, we'd know better how to prepare our students for when they do get to Arrowhead. Like, are Merton kids doing really well in language arts compared to the other feeder schools? And if they're not, then we know, okay, we need more time in that area. That's what I would like to see more of. I, I do think testing is important, but not too much. If schools could get the feedback from the high school, we'd know better how to prepare our students for when they do get to Arrowhead. Like, are Merton kids doing really well in language arts compared to the other feeder schools? And if they're not, then we know, okay, we need more time in that area. That's what I would like to see more of. I do think testing is important, but not too much.
And the next question, I'm going to paraphrase a bit. I believe what it's intended to mean is, Amy, as a board member, how do you support teaching and teachers in the district?
I think at Merton, we've really supported our teachers a lot. We have different programs for getting more education, they go out to a lot of seminars. We've got teaching staff where we have some specialists now, like coaches, they're called, the literature specialist who both then helps kids, or the teachers on how they present the material to children and make it more engaging. We just agreed to have a math specialist, someone that will help with math teaching. And these are support staff for the teachers, and we're one of the few schools that even does anything like that. Aside from that, in the fiscal area, we just started a 403B program here for our teachers because with the Act 10, one of the post-retirement benefits was taken away. Well, we thought, okay, the 403B, we can start saving, and the school matches part of whatever the teachers put in every year, and that's been very successful, and the teachers seem to enjoy that. So I think they do get a lot of support from our administration and from the school board, and we're very proud of what our teaching and the staff does.
Joe, as a board member, how do you support teaching and teachers in the district?
Well, I think you support teachers by letting them know that you're appreciative of all they're doing and provide them with the, I'm going to call it, best structure internally in the school, put together by the administration and chairs of various departments, so they can work together to improve their teaching efforts and the way they present things to the students themselves. The teachers within their own element are the best group to really help each other, working from experience, from the older teachers to aid the younger teachers, to bring them around. And that's why we have a staff at school that's made up mostly of teachers who have been there for a long period of time, and we use them as the mentors to bring the young teachers along.
All right, so we're going to switch to an audience question, and this one will be to Joe first. The topic is declining enrollment. Question is, why is declining enrollment such a problem? If the school can expand operations to handle decreasing enrollment, why can't operations contract for declining enrollment?
Well, one of the reasons is you have declining enrollments, but you can, I don't know where I want to put this. You can't just arbitrarily go in and start cutting the number of classes for particular subjects, because the declining enrollment is spread over such a vast area of the educational process that it may take one student out of this class or two students out of that class. You still have to keep those classes in place, be able to teach the remaining students that are there. So there's not really all that much you can do for condensing individual classes with the declining enrollment.
Thank you, Joe. And Amy, same question to you. The topic is declining enrollment. The question is, why is declining enrollment such a problem? If the school can expand operations to handle decreasing enrollment, why can't operations contract for declining enrollment?
Well, every student brings money into the school, so it's an issue when you're losing students, of course. And that was one of the questions I had when, years ago, before I was even on the board. But when you think about it, when students aren't coming to the schools for some reason, you know, they move out of the district or, you know, they graduate, whatever, you're not always losing, like, a whole class, like, a whole grade from eighth grade leaves. It's all piecemeal, you know? There's one kid in eighth grade, two kids in seventh grade, three kids here and three kids there. So you can't really eliminate a class unless they're all from the same class. So what you have to do kind of is look at your workloads, look at your teachers, try to do a balancing act, you know? Can they make this a block class or something like that? You have to manipulate, kind of like a puzzle almost, putting something back together again. But you just can't eliminate positions or classes or anything just because of declining enrollment. It all matters where the children are, what grade, that type of thing, so.
So this next question will be the last question for closing statements by each candidate. This one will go to Amy first. The topic is community. The question is, how will or do you plan to involve the community to address the fiscal crisis that Arrowhead High School is facing?
Well, I think Arrowhead's doing a pretty good job right now, letting the community know that they're in dire straits, I guess, needing this referendum. You know, we've gotten pamphlets, we've gotten the mailers. If you have a student at Arrowhead, you get the emails. So I think they're bringing it to the attention of the community, and it is on the ballot on April 4th. What I'm more worried about is what if it fails April 4th? It doesn't sound like Arrowhead has much of a plan if that doesn't happen. So I'd like to be a part of the solution of that. And I know I mentioned, there was a newspaper interview with Joe and myself that ran in the paper today, and I mentioned that I was a no vote for the referendum. I did not vote for the referendum in November, and I'm not planning on voting for it in April either. Reason being is, since I have been on the board at Merton, I've seen what we can do with declining enrollment and less money coming in, and we're doing fantastic things. We've accomplished so much, our buildings, maintenance, everything that some of the people who missed, but Randy went over my lines before the start about our parking lot and our roofs and our HVAC and all that, that we were, okay, hindsight.
Okay, Joe, same question to you. The topic is the community, and the question is, how will or do you plan to involve the community to address the fiscal crisis that Arrowhead High School is facing?
Well, I think some of the things that Amy said here are true. We have attempted to keep the community informed as to what the status is over at the high school. The referendum is something that we really need. If that don't pass, it's going to impact our students, and we're going to do our best to provide whatever we can, keep the programs going that we have. And we will keep the community abreast all the way through the whole process. We haven't addressed it yet, because if the referendum does pass, then we have utilized, you know, a lot of time that we can utilize to do other things. But it will be addressed in a strong, political way.
All right, thank you, Joe. We're going to move now to closing statements. Since Amy went first with opening statements, we're going to have, give Joe the opportunity to vote first with closing statements. We only have two minutes.
I want to thank everybody for having me here this evening and for your attendance here. I have been involved with school boards in schools for maybe more years than I want to count at the present time, but I enjoy doing it. I enjoy working with a group of people who have put the students in the Arrowhead community as number one. We'll continue to provide programs for them, you know, same as we have in the past, providing, you know, the revenues are going to be in place to let us accomplish that. If the referendum does not pass, then there's going to be some very difficult situations for the board to make. I appreciate the time. I appreciate the time that you've allowed me to sit on school boards. I would like to continue doing whatever I can to assist in providing the best for our students. And I had only asked one thing. Please vote the way you feel you want as far as your representative to Arrowhead. But I would ask you to very diligently analyze the impact that it could conceivably have on the students in this complete district, including the students, of course, here at Merton right now, if this referendum does not pass, because unfortunately, it's going to be the students who are going to suffer in the long run. Thank you.
Amy, you'll have two minutes for closing statements.
Okay. First of all, like Joe said, I'd wish to thank everybody for coming tonight. I appreciate it, and I hope I gave you some perspective on my views and where I'm coming I'd like to say that Joe and I have our differences, especially when it's regards to referendum, but I do respect him for all his years of service on the board, and he's a nice guy.
I don't get that at all.
One thing I'd like to say is, if you elect me, I've worked very hard for you at Arrowhead. I've worked very hard on the Merton School Board also, and I've really enjoyed my time here. I've enjoyed the people I've gotten to know on the board. We may not always agree with everything, but school boards aren't supposed to always agree on everything. That's the point. I would do my due diligence for any issues or anything that comes up. When I've been in Merton, we've had two contentious issues. One of them was a cell tower, which at first I thought was a great idea, would bring money to the district, and I started hearing from constituents and their concerns got me thinking, and I spent a lot of time doing a lot of research on it on my own. And in the end, I concluded that we should not have a cell tower here. It just wasn't worth it. I talked to doctors, I talked to realtors, I talked to the constituents a lot on the phone. Some weren't very nice, some called later to apologize. And another thing that's going on right now is busing. For doing the legwork, Ron, our superintendent, and myself and another board member, Katie, who's also in the audience, Ron took us around the areas that are concerned about busing. Right now, Barb River is asking that Merton provide busing in certain areas that don't get it. So we took the time one day and just drove around the whole entire Merton area, looking where the buses go, what the routes are like. And that's the kind of work you'll get from me if you vote for me on April 4th. And like I said, I am a no vote for the referendum. I think there's so many other things that could be done before we ask the taxpayers to foot the bill for 20 years. This is already on top of another referendum that just falls off in 2020, and I think that's too much debt. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe and Amy, for your time and your offering of your services and time to the community. It's greatly appreciated. Ron, if you'd like to give closing statements?
Sure. Again, thank you on behalf of the Merton Community School District and the Merton PTO. Thank you to Joe and thank you to Amy, not only for being here this evening, but for your public service. And if we could give a big round of applause for you. And just a reminder to please vote on April 4th, and we are going to take about a five to seven minute break, and we'll regroup for the Merton candidate forum. So thank you all for joining us. Thank you.